I believe all of the commissioners here. Jason, welcome. There we go. Good. Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Mr. Pacino will be the Board Secretary this evening. And what I'd like to do, as I had mentioned, we're going to be moving the public comment section to just after the report of the Audit Committee. If we could move into the report of the Audit Committee, please.
Sure, is the floor mine? Okay.
Yes. Oh, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Zach Ventross, and I am an Audit Manager at Melanson. And we were the audit firm who performed the December 31, 2019 Audit of the Redding Municipal Light Department. And tonight, I'm going to go through the financial statements and highlight some certain account balances and some trends. So if at any point anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me, and I can go over those at that time. Before I jump into the financial statements, I just want to make a note that the financial statements are not presented on a comparative basis since the prior audit was for a six-month period. This was due to the department moving its fiscal year end from June 30 to December 31, and that took place in the prior calendar year. There was a fiscal year audit for the June 30, 2018 period, and then there was also a six-month audit as of December 31, 2018. So the information that would be presented on the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in net position would not be comparable if both were presented. So the department management decided not to present comparative for the December 31, 2019 audit, but the department management does expect to begin presenting comparative financial statements again, starting with the December 31, 2020 audit. So before I jump in, I think it's important to have a conclusion or a takeaway from my presentation. I think that the things that the individuals here should be taking away is that the department had positive operating results in calendar year 2019, a well-funded OPEB trust fund, and no management letter. And I can get into what no management later needs maybe a little bit later in my presentation. If I could first have you turn to the first page after the table of contents. This is the first page of the Independent Auditors Report. The department received a clean opinion, which means that there are no exceptions, which is the best opinion you can receive from an independent audit. And this is the same opinion that the department has received in prior years. If I next could have you turn to page three, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. The Management's Discussion and Analysis takes place on pages three through six.
Excuse me, did you want to present that page as we're seeing here, or how do you want to do this?
Sorry, I don't follow.
Okay, we don't see the, we don't see the page being presented.
Do you have it handy? I'm sorry.
Can you, or does it need to be presented, I guess is the question.
I can't pull it up as like a presentation like on the screen, I apologize.
Tracy has it.
Wendy, is that something you can do?
I think Tracy's doing it right now. Is that correct, Tracy? Tracy's working on it, thank you.
You want me to pause and hold while she gets that up?
Yes.
Just for a minute, sure.
Sure, no problem.
While we're doing that, there was, I forgot to ask that all remote participants please identify themselves if we wouldn't mind maybe everyone just saying hello and who you are.
Sure, I'll get the ball rolling. I'm Zach Ventross. I'm the Audit Manager in charge of the December 31, 2019 Audit of the Redding Municipal Light Department.
We're Tom and Ann Moll on 93 Oak Street in Redding.
I'm Seth Earthweight from 8 Hunt Street in Redding.
Thank you.
David Kay on Pratt Street, member of the UU C.R.
Bill Page, Chair of the Green Sanctuary, New Church of Redding, and Coordinator of the Greater Redding Alliance for Clean Energy Workers.
Jeffrey Quorum from 31 Ridge Road.
Carolyn Whiting from 17 Chestnut Road in Redding.
Martha Moore, 102 Sanborn Lane, and a member of the Conservation Commission.
And Bruce McKenzie, same address.
David Zeke, 163 Pearl Street in Redding, and the Climate Advisory Committee, Redding.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Stepanek, am I good to continue?
Yes, you are. Yep, we've got it presented. We've got it up now. So what page are you referring to? Page three?
Page two, this is the first page of the Independent Auditors Report. And this, Tracy, I'll be brief. This is again, the department received the clean opinion, which means there are no exceptions, which is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditor. And again, this is the same opinion that the department has received in prior audits. Tracy, if you could go down to page five. Thank you. And this is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And this takes place over the course of the next four pages, and it's just a narrative summary of the results of operation. And this section also discusses any major financial areas. So instead of just simply sitting here and reading this to you, I'd actually like to jump to page seven or page nine for you, Tracy. And that's going to be the statement of net position. And we'll discuss the same topics there that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. The first item I'd like to bring to your attention is maybe about a third of the way down the page. It's under non-current assets. It is the capital assets net of accumulated depreciation. That has a balance of $79,084,000, which is actually about a $1.9 million increase from the prior year. Now, this increase is primarily due to improvements in infrastructure. In total, the department spent $6.5 million in total capital asset additions, but that was softened by about $4.5 million in depreciation expense, which leads to about the $1.9 million increase in that account balance. Now, some of the major capital asset additions that took place in calendar year 2019 was $1.1 million was spent on new poles and fixtures, $2 million was spent on overhead conductors, and $1.3 million was spent on underground conduit and devices. The next item I'd like to bring to your attention is maybe two-thirds of the way down the page. Keep scrolling, Tracy, and there you go. It's under liabilities, and it's non-current liabilities. And the first one there is the net pension liability. And the net pension liability has a balance of $14,610,000. Now, this balance represents the department's portion of the total unfunded liability for the Redding contributory retirement system. And the Redding Municipal Light Department's portion of that total unfunded liability is 28%. And the system as a total is at 72% funded. And what we see in the Commonwealth as an average is around 65 to 70%. So that system is slightly above average when compared to other communities in the Commonwealth with funding that total liability. Now, this is actually a $3.8 million increase from the prior year. That $14.6 million figure, it's about an increase of 3.8 from the prior year. And that increase is primarily due to the retirement system's investment results coming in less than what was anticipated. It came in less than what was anticipated by about $13.4 million. Which, if you take the $13.4 million, multiply it by the 28%, you get to about $3.8 million. So that's really the primary driving factor for that increase in that liability is that investment results came in less than what was anticipated for the retirement system. The next figure I'd like to bring to your attention is actually the one right below that. It is the net OPEB liability. And that has a balance of $7,094,000. This is actually a decrease of about $280,000 compared to the prior year. So it's very comparable to the 2018 figure. And essentially, this is just the department's health insurance. And the department actually has set aside funds to begin funding that liability and has funded that liability at about 36 or 37%. Now, this is actually a strong financial position for the Light Department because most communities, specifically towns in the Commonwealth, have funded this liability anywhere from 1 to 10%. And then, when compared to other light departments in the Commonwealth, other light departments are funding that liability anywhere from 20 to 40%. So the department, the Redding Municipal Light Department, to have that funded at 36% is on the higher end of your contemporaries, which again is a strong financial position for the Redding Municipal Light Department. If I could have you turn the page to page 10. Thank you. There's a couple of figures I'd like to bring to your attention here. The first one is maybe about halfway down the page. It's under, it's the first item under operating expenses. That's good, Tracy. Can you actually go up just a bit, Tracy? Perfect, right there, it's great. Is purchased power expenses. That's a balance of $61,027,000 for calendar year 2018. When extrapolating out the prior year, this is actually about a decrease of about $9 million compared to the prior year. So the cost of power that the department had to, the department expended to purchase power was actually less than it was in the prior year. And that can be seen as an offset to the operating revenues. So if you look under operating revenues, the very first line on it is electric sales net of discounts. And that has a balance of $89,475,000. Again, when extrapolating out the prior year, that figure is about $9 million less than the prior calendar year. So essentially, the department had savings on the cost of the power that it purchased, and then it passed those savings on to the customers that they saw that they, the department received, or again passed on to the customers of the Light Department. And then, Tracy, if you go down to the bottom, the last number I'd like to bring to your attention here tonight is three numbers from the bottom, and it is the change in net position. And that has a balance of $4,319,000. This is essentially the net income for the Redding Municipal Light Department. And again, this shows a strong position that the department had strong operating results in calendar year 2019. This is the last thing I wanted to bring to your attention. So again, I think in conclusion, the takeaway should be that the department had positive operating results in calendar year 2019, a well-funded Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, and no management letter. And a management letter is essentially above and beyond looking at and verifying the numbers in the department's financial statements. We also look at the internal controls to make sure that the department's assets are appropriately safeguarded. And if we had any recommendations to improve those internal controls, we'd recommend them in a formal management letter. And the department did not receive a management letter, which is indicative of the department's management taking the internal controls and the safeguarding of the assets very seriously, and they ensure that those controls are operating effectively at all times. Of Melanson's clients, approximately 10% do not receive a management letter. So the department not having a management letter puts them in very high, you know, esteem with their contemporaries and not having a management letter, which is again, is very indicative and positive of management at the Light Department.
Thank you very much, Zach. I think we're ready to move on then to the report of the Audit Committee. Mr. Pacino?
Yeah, so the Audit Committee met, I believe it was last Thursday. And basically, Zach reviewed a lot of the information that he's just reviewed, except in more detail. There were some questions that were raised. Zach has written a memo in answering those questions. There were some changes requested in the report. Particularly, there was a question on the COVID-19 that was added to the report that the COVID-19 has not affected the department either operationally or the supply chains in terms of that. So that's the one thing that's been added. There've been some other changes that had been identified and had been changed. The committee did recommend the report be accepted, the financial statements be accepted by the, by the commission. It was unanimous vote with the, but there was the provision that the items be addressed, which they have been addressed, and there was a memo out there on, on those items. So with that, I can make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you're ready at some point.
Please, yes.
Okay. Let me find it. A move that the Board of Commissioners accept the audit report from Melanson, calendar year ended December 31, 2019, as presented and as amended by the Audit Committee on the recommendation to the General Manager.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Hold the second.
Any discussion? If not, could I take a vote, please, to accept the motion?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stepanek?
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye.
Thank you. Please record 5-0 acceptance. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, so we're moving on to the next item, which is the public comment.
You want Zach to say?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go.
Zach can head off if you want.
And I'm, if it would be okay?
Okay.
Would it be okay if I make a quick statement?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
I'd really like to thank the staff at the Redding Municipal Light Department, specifically Wendy, Colleen, Stephen, Patty, and Trevor, who we worked very closely with on the audit. There were certainly some difficulties encountered into the COVID-19, and the staff at the department worked exceptionally hard to make this audit as smooth as possible. So I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work in helping get this product done. So again, thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
I'd like to, I'd like to also commend Melanson for, you know, making this happen virtually. It wasn't an ideal situation, but they were able to pull it off with us. And I believe we were one of the first audits to get done this year. So, you know, kudos to his team, and they did a great job. Thank you, Zach.
Okay, I'd like to move on to the public comment. We'll start with the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board. Jason, do you have any, any feedback or comments?
I don't have this time.
Okay, thank you. The liaisons to the RMLD Board, Karen or Vanessa, I, I'm sorry, I don't see them here. Perhaps they're not here? They may not be here this evening. Now, we're into public comment. If any of the members of the public with us here tonight, by the way, we're very excited to see so many people interested in helping us get through this and watching our paint dry. But it's, it's wonderful to have you all here. And if you'd like to make a comment, please just give us your name and obviously your address, and then please limit your comment to five minutes, please. Would anyone care to make a comment before we move on?
I would. Jeffrey Quorum.
Yes, go ahead, Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Quorum of 31 Ridge Road in Redding. I'm a town meeting member as well as an employee of Analog Devices, a large customer of RMLD. But I want to be clear that I'm here speaking just as a town resident. I had some slides to convey my points, which I sent to Tracy Schultz this morning, but she said I cannot show them because they were not sent 48 hours in advance, even though I'm just asking to share them from my computer on Zoom during this public comment session. Anyway, if you want them, she has them. What you would have seen on the slides, and you can sort of see in the Zoom background, is my daughter's artwork from the RMLD Shred the Peak Art Contest a couple of years.
By the way, it's fantastic. She did a fabulous job. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Yeah, she won a prize. So I take notice of the Shred the Peak messages, and I was shocked to see the suggestions on Twitter to raise the temperature on your AC from 70 to 73. My slides would have shown three different images from the RMLD Twitter feed, and then a screen capture from the RMLD webpage suggesting 68 to 72 degrees. 68 degrees? The people in my house tell me 68 degrees is freezing in winter. So it's crazy to say that 68 or 70 degrees is the normal non-peak air conditioning temperature for the summer. Energy Star says we should set our thermostats to 78 degrees when we're home. That's six degrees warmer than the Shred the Peak conservation recommendation. Those of us who are already at 78 degrees think we're already exceeding RMLD's recommendations, so we're not going to make changes during Shred the Peak. My screenshots would also have shown, screenshots from Energy Star, Consumer Reports, and even two air conditioning manufacturers, all showing 78 as the recommended temperature. I emailed Joyce Mulvaney at the end of June, and she did make a change. She removed the temperature suggestions, so the Twitter graphic just says, "Raise the temperature a few degrees." However, the RMLD website still has a video that says 70 to 74 degrees. And the Daily Times Chronicle from this Monday, if you read down here, it says 70 to 73 degrees. So I would like to ask the Board to direct RMLD to change all the Shred the Peak messaging to use the Energy Star recommendation of 78 degrees for normal and suggest customers raise it to 80 degrees during peak times. Thank you.
I think Jeffrey's got some excellent points. And I don't know how we settled on the, our degrees temperature in the first place, but I personally agree with you, Jeffrey. I think it's, turning it up higher is exactly the right thing to do and or making that suggestion anyway to people to be able to do that. Are there any other comments from the Commissioners?
Yeah, it does seem common sense. And I'm also, I haven't seen these, did the slides get sent around to the full board at some point?
We just, we just got them, and we, and Jeffrey, we do have a policy that states it has to be sent in advance so we can screen them one, so we can, people can review them. And we've had instances, just so you know, in the past where someone has presented and has taken 15, 20 minutes, and the data that they showed was incorrect. And so it became kind of a messy situation. So we like to get the slides at least, you know, 48 hours in advance, so we can circulate them, and then perhaps allow them to be shown. There was no guarantee that they will be, but you made your point in an excellent way in five minutes, so it's, you don't need your slides.
I thought the screenshots, particularly from Energy Star and Consumer Reports, were sort of interesting.
Sure, I understand.
And we can't, I mean, I remember, I happened to have the good fortune of being the Commissioner Delegate at the Select Board Meeting. I recall people in a setting like this. It's very difficult in these Zoom meetings, right? I mean, we're all sitting here like the Brady Bunch. And, you know, it's hard to like communicate, but some people were asking, hey, can I put up a couple of slides to illustrate what they were saying, and it was very effective. And I think it was just happening organically as opposed to when we were in the meeting room. So my, I mean, that was only two minutes or so. I would certainly like to see his slides, and maybe we could see him at the next meeting if that.
We'll send the slides around to everyone.
Okay. Are you requesting that they be shown at some point, Jeffrey, or?
I'd be happy to come back and show them next meeting.
Well, thank you much for taking the time to point out, and I certainly would agree with the idea. What was it again, that it should be at?
78 degrees.
78 degrees.
And Energy Star says that, and the air conditioning manufacturers recommend 78 as a conservation, and we're suggesting during peak times when our system is stressed, we're suggesting that people raise it to 74 degrees. So that does seem like we're not, our message needs to be consistent with Energy Star, at least on peak days. No?
Agreed.
I certainly would be having, I'd certainly be happy to, you know, is this something that we can kind of agree as a sense of the Board to ask the department to do, or?
I don't see there's, there's, one, there's no harm in it, and two, it is based in other organizations who've done the analysis. So I see absolutely no reason why we wouldn't do that unless there's I can literally cannot see any reason why we wouldn't advise that.
And either, I agree. I mean, I'd like to know why, why it was originally set up the way it was, like what the rationale was, if anybody here knows, but I'd agree with what's been said by Jeffrey and everybody else.
Jeffrey, good catch. We'll follow up on it.
All right.
And thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
This is Jim Seth Earthweight. So we of the Greater Redding Alliance for Clean Energy have, we'd like to make a brief request regarding the clean energy policy, but that's item nine on the agenda. And with your permission, we'd like to make our comment at item nine rather than holding up the meeting and talking out of context about that issue right now.
Okay, that's, that's absolutely fine.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, please? Anyone else, please? If not.
Yes. This David Kay.
Oh, David, okay. Yes, please.
From the Unitarian Church in Reading. Pardon the naivety of this question, but maybe you could just point me in the general direction for how we would go about adding solar energy devices to our church in the future. Don't need, don't need a, don't need an encyclopedia of information right now. Just just point me in the right, down the right path, and that will, that would answer my our question for us. Thank you.
Colleen, would you have any immediate comment to Mr. Kay's question?
No.
Yeah, we will. We will provide that information to you before our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Can I add that Chuck is sitting here? Chuck, do you want to speak on solar opportunity for the church?
The church can find information on our rebate opportunities online. The issue for the church as a nonprofit will be taking advantage of incentives that are provided through tax offsets. And since the church doesn't pay taxes, it can't take advantage of the tax offset benefits. But if you would like to contact RMLD's Integrated Resources Department, we would be glad to discuss in more detail how the church can work through that aspect of the process, and what are available for incentives, and what the filing process would look like, depending on the scale of the church's project.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other comments?
If I might, as long as I am unmuted, we did already address the issue of setting temperature. We have moved the specific values out of the way and have recommended increasing a couple of degrees, rather than try to pinpoint specific targets for a variety of reasons. We did note the catch in the Reading Chronicle, and that was because they copied an older version of the notification. We're working with them to I don't know if I went down or not. We're working with them to use updated copy, and we're aware of the video, and we are re-recording that piece of it with the specific temperature ranges in it. So we have moved to a nonspecific recommendation to increase three or four degrees temperature. And the reason for that is that we're not sure how off-putting it would be for people to find that the specific temperature setting that is recommended for them to start at is above where their temperature setting actually is. So.
Please. I think I think we can discuss this offline further, and because I think both of those are good points. But, you know, if we have independent organizations recommending certain areas, well, I just suggest we we discuss it offline, if that's okay.
We'd be glad to.
Thank you. Could we move on to item number seven, General Manager's Report? Ms. O'Brien, the RMLD COVID-19 response?
Yes, thanks. So I've been keeping the Board and all the employees up to date on our EOP, Emergency Operating Procedure on COVID Infectious Disease. We are currently and have been ahead of of the safety issues on this. We've had team meetings every day, 10 o'clock, since the first of March. We, there are four areas of the Governor's Order, which was recently sent out. We've sent out two memos on that. That's staffing, hygiene, cleaning, and operating. And we are well within the 10 people per 1,000 square foot of accessible space. We have increased all of our cubicles up to the six-foot level with Plexiglas. Any of the cubicles that were open-ended, including our customer service, has been added with Plexiglas. Our Teams A and B on operations still remain on-site, but at different locations. We still have most of the administrative staff working remotely. Our business and electrical continuity, even through several storms, has been spot-on. No one has gotten ill. So that's very good. And we continue to, you know, work with the town and the command incident team. We have not heard back from the Board of Health as far as opening our building, but since most of the customers have found paying online, we really haven't had much pressure to open. But when we do, through the Board of Health, our lobby is all marked about wearing face masks, keeping social distancing, and we're ready for the public when we do get opened. Thank you.
Any any discussion or comments? If not, perhaps we can move to you, Chuck, again, for the Integrated Resources.
Okay, I do have a slide presentation if.
Yes, you do. A very detailed one, thank you.
Despite the detail, we will try and push through it rather quickly. So this is a new slide. We have been tracking the loads against the budget for 2020. And as I've stated previously, the first three months of the year, our actuals were running below our loads. This was pre-COVID-19 impacts. Beginning in April and including May, we were again running low, but factored in there along with weather and some other things were the impacts of COVID-19. We got to June, and lo and behold, our actual load was higher than our forecasted load. So the conclusion that we're drawing from this is that we were not as adversely impacted by COVID-19 as we had initially projected. And as we go through the summer months and into the fall, we're going to continue to monitor the load situation. But we're hopeful that we are not going to see a significant decline in economic activity due to COVID-19, especially due to the fact that the Commonwealth is now coming out of that. So wanted to put that up there, just as an indication of where things are going at this point. So.
Chuck, can I interrupt for one second? Dave Hennecy, I was just wondering why we think that's the case, that it hasn't impacted us economically?
It hasn't impacted us severely economically. We have not seen the loads for our system drop off dramatically. If you recall back in March, when we first presented estimates, we were looking at the same range of impact that others were nationally in the 6% to 8% range. That did not happen. And as we come back out, we believe that we're seeing a restoration of much of that. Our commercial sector did not close down. We did not experience losses in retail sales. And the payment history is looking very good. People still taking advantage of the prompt payment discount at levels equal to what they were before the COVID-19 impacts. So the anecdotal evidence that's in right now says that we're in good shape. We've come out of this. Our revenue stream is strong. Our loads remain strong.
Thank you, Chuck.
Next, please, Tracy. So overall, we're tracking our purchase power expense against the budget. You can see that we've come in well below expected projections. And right now, we see nothing that would dissuade us from continued lower than anticipated power supply expenses. We're actually seeing hours of the day, even during the summer, when the cost per kilowatt hour in the wholesale market is 2 to 2.5 cents. Normally, in the summertime, we're looking at something closer to 5 cents for the energy that we purchase. So we're seeing a rather dramatic decrease in that market value of power. So there is still significant downward pressure on rates. Tracy, the next slide, please. So these are our energy costs. Much of ours is under contract, but you can see that we're not seeing upward pressure on the market portion of our portfolio, and our costs are holding slightly below what was budgeted. Next slide, please. Capacity costs are usually fixed, and they have been running slightly below where they were projected to be. This is one of the bigger contributors to our power supply market savings. And I can't tell if I'm live, because my screen just went blank. But I'm still hearing things. So if we go to the the next slide, I'll see if I can talk blind here. This should be our transmission expense. And looking at the transmission expense, we see that that's down below where it was projected. The reason for that is that we have had our loads at peak down rather significantly, and as a result of that, we've brought transmission expense in lower than expected. I apologize, I'm still flying blind, so I'm not sure what the next slide.
You got the PowerPoint presentation, though, in front of you, right, Chuck? I mean.
No, I can't see my screen. That's my screen's gone blank.
Oh.
Let me see.
So this is actual kilowatt purchases by resources.
Again, basically, that's showing where our resource portfolio is coming from.
Chuck, if you want to take a minute and just reboot your machine, go ahead.
Okay, there we go. All right. So you can you can see where our resource mix is coming from. Basically, we have been selling back to the market, small quantities each month. But the rest of our portfolio has operated as anticipated. So the the units are producing. We've had no unexpected outages impacting us. So next slide, please. Okay, this is a projected portfolio that includes all of the non-carbon resources that we have under contract, whether they are solar, wind, hydro, or nuclear. We have put them on the chart here. What this shows, if you look at the dotted red line, that is the Commonwealth's original renewable portfolio standard. That was replaced fairly recently with the Clean Energy Standard that looks to non-carbon generation, but sets a higher goal standard for the investor-owned utilities. The yellow line is what the municipal light plants proposed about a year ago in the legislature. It is called the Golden Bill, and it is the standard that we are recommending the municipal light plants in Massachusetts be held to. You can see from the portfolio resources that in the early years, we are ahead of the curve in terms of our potential to meet any of the standard lines that are there. And in another four years, we're looking at something like 70% of our portfolio being As the contracts, 10-year contracts begin to wear off, that drops, but we have the opportunity to renew those or expand into other contracts. So we've we've made pretty aggressive efforts at a non-carbon portfolio going forward. So. Tracy, the next slide, please. One of the things that we were asked to produce was a valuation study for the RECs that we have in our portfolio. Our RECs basically fall into three categories: Class 1 RECs, Class 2 RECs, and a category called Other. Those happen to be a couple of projects in Vermont and Maine that don't meet the Connecticut and Massachusetts RECs thresholds. But if we take a look, the the Class 1 RECs are currently valued at about 4.5 cents a kilowatt hour, and the Class 2 RECs are currently valued at about 2 cents a kilowatt hour. So when we take a look at the impacts of selling or retiring the RECs, we used 2 cents a kilowatt hour for those RECs in our portfolio, valued as Class 2, and 4 cents a kilowatt hour in our portfolio for those RECs, valued as Class 1. So those values, we've been able to go through and determine impacts from different configurations of treatment for the RECs. Tracy, the next slide, please. So the, this is the listing of the RECs that we have, or at least have control of in our portfolio. Class 1, Class 2 are fairly straightforward. The Palmer option are RECs that we have the right of first refusal for. We don't pay for them currently. But if, when the plant starts producing, we want to acquire and retire the RECs associated with that output, we have the capability to do so. The other RECs are worth maybe a dollar a megawatt hour. The FX are the non-carbon generation associated with the nuclear contribution in our portfolio. We have been participating in the D O E R program for installing solar on our distribution system, and I have a report on how that's performing. Those are currently in it. Those are currently in at zero until we get an assessment of how much that project activity is going to produce for us. But those are by year, the total non-carbon components of our portfolio that we can use to meet the different standards depending on what the legislature eventually decides should apply to municipal light plants. So the next slide, please, Tracy. So I've put in here some definitions, just to refresh everybody. Those can be read at people's leisure. The next, please. So what I went through and did was determined for the Golden Bill, the Clean Energy Standards, the Renewable Portfolio Standards, what the impacts on retail rates would be with complying with each of those standards. And then, in addition, I took a look at what the impact would be if we were to acquire and retire all of the REXs in our portfolio. And I added one more step and said we would acquire and retire the REX option in the Palmer biomass project that we have. So over time, those are what we would expect to see as rate impacts from each of those. Next slide, please, Tracy. This is simply a graphic representation of the data that's on the previous page. The yellow is the rate impact by year of retiring the REXs to meet the Golden Bill standard. The Clean Energy Standard compliance is the peach-colored. The Renewable Portfolio Standard, which is the renewables standard. We have the retiring all of the REXs that we currently control from our projects. And then the blue is the REX and the biomass. So simply a graphical representation of the rate impacts each year for retiring the REXs in those years. Next, please. Now, we signed up for matching rebate contributions for a DOER grant program that was supposed to run through June of this year. We originally committed to $250,000 of matching funds for DOER. To date, we have made rebate commitments of just under $165,000. We have uncommitted funds of $85,000 between now and the end of the year for projects to take advantage of. We're at about 66% spent to date of the grant entitlement. We have 28 participants, and with an average payout of $5,875 per participant, we estimate that there are another 15 project slots based on the current allocation to RMLD of DOER grant funds. So we think we've made some pretty good headway with that project. Next slide, please. So we have a couple of programs that we actually launched recently. I apologize, to get the information on the slide, I had to compress it a little bit. But we've been running a yard equipment, cordless yard equipment program. We have an electric panel upgrade program for people who are acquiring electric vehicles and need a little more capacity on their panel, or those who are putting in heat pump technology and need a little more room on their panels. So we've got, so far, 85 rebates paid out for the cordless electric yard equipment. We've done two panel upgrades, and we have six air source heat pumps that we have paid out. That is through June 30th. The updated numbers have grown a little bit from there. But for the cordless electric yard equipment, we've actually had to increase the budget allocation because it was more successful than we had originally anticipated. So that's what I had for my presentation this evening.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Do we have any comments from...
I have a question, Chuck. Your usual excellent, detailed presentation here. Thank you and Colleen for this work. I greatly appreciate it. As you know, I've been, I sent a couple emails over the last couple of weeks asking questions, and you've already answered them. I'm very grateful for that. I wondered if you could go back to the slide where you showed what the percentage increases would be under these different regimes? That one, yeah. So this is right here. It's like, thank you. So what I'm seeing here is that to comply with the Clean Energy Standard, the rates would have to go up. You're estimating 2.96% next year and 1.58%, more than they otherwise would, right? Is that the gist of that?
Yes.
Following, and so on. So, you know, there surely will be differences of opinion on the board and among the public about whether to make, whether to consider that. But I do think this is something that we should be looking at, and we should have the option, and we should be offering out to the people who elect us and who are our rate payers to say, hey, are you willing to, you know, my electric bill's about $70, $80. So 2.9% would be, would be a couple of dollars a month, you know, less than a cup of a latte, right, a month? I'm certainly willing to pay that. And John Stenbeck mentioned last meeting, hey, could we adopt a rate payer for people who are having trouble? I certainly would be willing to do that for a neighbor. So I just hope that as we go forward and look at our Policy Number 30, we consider this as an option, and we decide as a board, which of these do we want to go? Do we want to have the minimum, or do we want to go and meet the energy standard like the IOUs do, if I understand that correctly, and have our rates go up 2% or 3% more? Put that out there and have that conversation. And that's kind of all I wanted to get across. So you saved me a lot of time later, so I really thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. And this will definitely be a topic of conversation for us over the next few months. And there are so many different considerations we have to take care of, obviously, in terms of people who can pay, are willing to pay, and then those who are, obviously, are out of a job, and any little bit hurts them somewhat. So we need to be clever and flexible about helping them to do this as well. So we'll certainly discuss this moving forward. And Chuck, I agree, excellent presentation. Thank you. Can we move on to the next, if there are no other comments, onto item number nine? And Mr. Talbot, Dave, I think that's your topic you had set before this.
Yeah, I went to the Select Board. The main topic of that item was that it fell to me, I was very happy to do it, to represent us before the Select Board on Tuesday evening. It was a great conversation. At a high level, the Select Board is interested in, you know, what can we do as a town, and how the town and the RMLD can work together on various initiatives, having to do with, whether it's clean energy or anything else. And the Select Board, as many of you may know, has been interested in the Green Communities Program, which is a great program. And, you know, fitting that into our context is challenging because we serve, you know, four towns. So having, that's one of the challenges. So having one of the four very anxious to do this is great. How do we move forward? And I know that Colleen and Chuck are working on that to get those technical answers, including whether there's a way to do a mirror version of that program. It's a little above my head in terms of the technical and policy details, which is why it's great to have, you know, the smart people in the room, being Chuck and Colleen. One thing, and I'd like to actually ask them to just briefly touch on that. Before I do, I also mentioned to the Select Board, who was asking, you know, what can we collaborate on? And I pointed out about the peak warnings, you know, does the town government itself act on those warnings when it receives them? And it appeared that there is not a protocol in effect at the town level, and that that might be something that the town looks at doing, which would be great. You know, as we've seen, some of these peaker plants, saw a slide, I think Chuck presented it somewhere, where the Peak Oil Plant at Stony Point, you know, is 10 times as much wholesale cost as other power plants. So it's both a very dirty power plant and a very expensive one. So whether your main concern is emissions or money, there's something for all of you in wanting to not use that plant as much or at all. So hopefully, the town will act on that. I'd like to, you know, if Colleen and Chuck want to, to say anything about Green Communities, if not, it's fine, but just know that it's a topic that came up.
Jim Sartre, I think you had, you wanted to come in with a public comment at this point?
Yes, thank you very much for agreeing to let us do it at this time, and I want to thank Colleen and the RMLD staff for revisiting the Sustainable Energy Policy at this time, and to Chuck for anticipating these concerns by putting so much good information in the presentation we just saw. So I'm going to read what I have in the interest of brevity and precision, but it's not long. It's just over a page, and it will take well under the five minutes, probably.
Okay. Timer's started. As long as you don't have any slides. Ig timer's going.
Okay, well, my name is Jim Sartre, I live on Hunt Street, and I'm a member of the Greater Reading Alliance for Clean Energy, or GRAES. Thanks again for letting us talk now. The reference point for my comment is item 3D on the draft Sustainable Energy Policy, which appeared on the Board Book. And it said that the RMLD would adapt to the Clean Energy Standard and the Renewable Portfolio Standard if required by the state legislature to do so. Now, as the board and the RMLD staff know, but some of the other listeners may not, the CES and the RPS are standards that Massachusetts enforces on the investor-owned utilities, or IOUs, which supply electricity to about 85% of the state. And when you hear people talk about IOUs in this context, just think of Eversource and National Grid. That's basically who we're talking about at this end of the state. The Clean Energy Standard and the Renewable Portfolio Standard are not currently binding on municipal light plants, such as the RMLD, but they constitute the only well-defined, set, agreed-upon rules against we can measure ourselves to see if we are doing our fair share to mitigate climate change. Now, Mr. Underhill's, or Chuck's, current and past presentations show that the RMLD has prepared for the contingency that the RPS and the CES might, in the near future, be combining upon the RMLD. There are several bills working their way through the legislature, and we don't know which ones will be passed. But in this context, our request is a simple one. Catching up with the rest of the state in terms of clean energy is the right thing to do, and we've made preparations for it. So let's do it without, and not worry about whether the legislature is making us do it or not. And so I'll put the following single sentence in air quotes, because it constitutes the full request of our organization tonight. Quote, "GRAES requests that the RMLD adopt a policy of parity with the investor-owned utilities, hitting the same annual targets for renewable and clean energy, and reporting progress under exactly the same rules." And we're advocating this policy for the following reasons. There are four points, but they're all short. So point one is, it's not only simple, but comprehensive. The policy phrased this way, it immediately defines what types of energy are counted and what types are not counted. It automatically prohibits the double counting of renewable energy certificates, which has been a controversial topic. It spells out incremental improvement from year to year, and it even entails that the RMLD will hit new targets if such targets are mandated for the rest of the state. So it basically just helps us, you know, be pulling with the same weight on our OAS what everybody else in the other 85% of the state is doing on their OAS. Number two, as reasonable people, we don't think we can really ask for more. Cost is always a factor, and the RMLD has multiple constituencies to please. But number three, and perhaps most important, as people of conscience, and our group was founded when two churches in town got together, we don't see how we can ask for less. The rules imposed on the IOUs are the only transparent standard against which we can measure the fairness of our burden sharing relative to the rest of the state. The four towns served by the RMLD are relatively affluent, with median annual family incomes between $114,000 and $125,000. The core step-mining number for neighboring Woburn is $83,000. For the state as a whole, it's $80,000. And for Lynn, which borders on Minfield, it's only $54,000, or less than half the number for any of our four towns. So I think we should have moral clarity about this. It is not fair or just that our less affluent neighbors should pull their weight in creating a cleaner energy supply while we do less. Yes, municipal light plants have a different business model than investor-owned utilities, but there's a simple bottom line at the customer level, as far as, you know, how much we individually are paying and how much pollution we're creating for what we're paying. And if we at the customer level, if we're taking advantage of a legislative loophole in order to pay less by polluting more, then we, and I'm talking about us, the customer base, who ultimately guide our MLD policy, we've become, well, we've become those people who put money in their pockets by exploiting loopholes in order to pollute. And that's not who we want to be. So that's our, that's our main point.
Thank you. That was well done. Although, we're not the people who put money in our pocket. We put the money back in your pocket.
See, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about us as the customers, because
I know.
You're a customer in the false position, because I'm basically paying less in order to pollute, and I want to pay the right amount. And I'm sure the RMLD can bring this in a lot cheaper than Eversource and IOU are, but I would, you know, it's not going to cost a lot more, but let's just be fair and do our equal share. The last thing I wanted to say was that a far-sighted policy adopted now by the RMLD may have influence beyond the borders of our four towns. As the largest of the municipal light plants and the only one serving four different towns, the RMLD is positioned to be a leader and to set an example that the smaller municipal light plants can point to and follow. So that concludes my remarks, and thank you very much for considering our request. Thanks.
Thank you. Excellent comments. Any discussion from members of the board? I think, I might say that, you know, we're on, we're on that road, and that we are trying to do that. I think all of us on the, on the board are looking for all the items that you've just discussed. And the issue that we have, as you well know, is it is one of cost at the present time. And if we could find, you know, energy that was less expensive, we could still accomplish that, we'd still be ahead of the IOUs, because the IOUs, their average rate is 25% higher, at least, than what we're paying in any of our towns. So what you saw from Chuck's data is if we implemented all the elements, biomass plus REXs, et cetera, the bill, average bill, retail bill would increase by 10%. So at the retail level, for many of us who have jobs and are doing fine, I agree with you, it's probably not very much of an issue, and we're doing the right thing. The flip side is, for those people who are on fixed income or who don't have a job, it is not so easy to swallow, and that's why we're trying to consider other programs or other things we might be able to do to, you know, have this rider thing that Dave talked about with one person paying for a second, or perhaps some, some other funding source that we might be able to find to help alleviate that for some period of time. So we don't disagree with you. In general, we really don't. We just, we want to know what all the rules are and what our boundaries are so that we can do the right thing. And at the end of the day, you know, our charter is to provide reliable power to every one of our four towns at the lowest possible cost. And, you know, obviously, we're wrapping that into our policy of clean energy and renewable energy as well. So, but thank you for the comments. We take them to heart.
John, can I make a comment?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Okay. Just, just a little information about what we're doing right now. I mean, the money that we sell in REXs gets reimbursed. I mean, the money that we sell in REX gets reinvested in the projects. When Chuck showed you that chart and you saw the white dotted area at the part at the top, that's really our open position. And we are very careful when we're buying projects that are low risk, and we do try to be concerned with meeting, you know, the commitments that we have without adversely impacting the customers. But I'm going to ask Chuck to just explain a little bit. I mean, we are committing to serving the electricity that feeds our electric vehicle infrastructure that's, you know, we've started and that's going to be taking off with clean energy. We do a lot with that money, we sell the REX. And from the last several conferences that I've gone to, you know, area ones with peers, the municipal light plants are one of the largest organizations that makes the investment into new green or clean initiatives of projects in this particular area. Like, for example, that biomass project that you saw, that was the municipals getting together to make that happen. So we're making a lot happen, and that's what we're doing with that extra money. So I just want to throw that out there, because whatever the board decides on, once they're well-informed, we need to take that into consideration too, because we need projects in this area all throughout New England in order to, you know, to make this work. Because otherwise, you're buying REX on paper and doing things like that. And we want, we want to be part of building those things, we want them here. So I'll ask Chuck to add another comment, if that's okay with you, John.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
As Colleen pointed out, we have a philosophy that we instituted at the same time that we began our electrification programs. That is, the acceleration of penetration of electric vehicles into the transportation sector and the deployment of heat pump technology into the building envelope sector. And as part of that, we made a commitment to the commission when we presented these programs that we would acquire sufficient resources from non-carbon production that we would not be deploying electric vehicle technology and fueling the batteries in the electric vehicles with carbon derivative energy production. So we, as you saw on the portfolio, we've been very aggressive about the acquisition of non-carbon technology. Now, that is something that we're able to do and still maintain the electric rates where they have been. You heard from the auditor that 2019, we achieved a significant energy cost reduction over 2018. 2020, we're holding that course. So we think we've struck a pretty good balance in terms of being able to meet the interests and the needs of all of the community. But right now, our programs are providing us that resource. The question will be a policy, one for the commission to address. If we elect to move to retire REX, do they want to vote supplemental funds for us to continue the aggressive pursuit of new resources? Or do we slow that in order to strike a balance with the rate technology? So my job is to implement the policies that the commission develops, that's what we will do. I just point out that there are some additional facets to the activities and that my team has worked very hard to strike a balance on the facets that we're deploying.
The, I might just add another little side note to that, and that's that, you know, we have a disproportionate customer on the industrial side in analog devices, which is about, correct me if I'm wrong, 60% of our load, something like that?
They're about 12% of the load.
Sorry?
They're about 12%.
12%, but they're still larger than any other?
Yeah, our commercial industrial sector is about 60% of our load.
Right, thank you.
We are highly dependent on business activity.
And what we're trying to do from an economic development perspective is by keeping electric rates low to attract new businesses into the area, and especially with people who are high electric users, such as analog, for example. And we're very concerned about that, because if you look at them from a strategic perspective, they've acquired linear technology, which is based in Washington State, where the cost per kilowatt hour is a fraction of ours, so that they could easily move there if they chose to. They just also bought another large semiconductor manufacturer not in this area. So we're doing all that we can to reserve these large customers who are large electric users as well. And that's just part of why we're trying to keep the rates low as well. Now, the flip side of that is, one of the reasons they're here is because of the engineering resources that are in this area, right? Harvard, MIT, Northeastern, all the colleges, et cetera, which contribute probably even more than just the basic cost of electricity. But it's just one more element to convince them to stay here. So we're wrestling with these types of things day in and day out. And it's not just all about being carbon-free, it's all about who our customers are as well, and how do we meet all those needs in a kind of a mixed bag, a weighted average. Make sense?
May I make one brief clarifying comment, and then I'll be quiet for the rest of the evening, I promise?
Yeah, rest of the evening's going quickly.
Right, so in the very short term, our request may be more about reporting than about any concrete action. So I've been attending these meetings for six months now, and I really enjoy Chuck's presentations, but I still can't tell from the data we're seeing how well we're doing according to the rules that the IOUs follow. So there's a big game in town, that's the IOU game. There's a set of rules that everybody follows. And I appreciate all the activities that you're doing, what the three of you just said. But what that amounts to is you're saying, well, forget about that game, we're doing something different over here, but there's no way one can compare the two. And one suspects that in paying lower rates than, much lower rates than in Woburn, and not having any data on how we're doing, that maybe we're polluting a good bit more than our neighbors in Woburn. And so would it be possible, Chuck, for you every month to present a plot that shows if we followed the rules of the IOU, including selling of REX and so forth, where we are? And then, and then we could track it? And then if we are lower, then, you know, then it's okay to make footnotes and give reasons like, okay, we didn't meet this, but these are the other things we did. But at the moment, we're completely blind as to how we're doing relative to the other towns. So is that information?
John, can I ask a question? Isn't that exactly the slide that we've been showing that shows where we are and exactly how we're doing relative to RPS, CES, and the Goldenville? That's exactly what, that's exactly what I asked Chuck to develop almost, you know, six or eight months ago, and that's how we're tracking exactly what your question is. Am I missing that?
But some of those REX are being sold, so in that plot, then, there should be another bar that, you know, these are things that were contracted for clean energy, but then we sold the REX. So then there's kind of another bar there that takes away from the others that says, this is the energy that's getting burned in the system statewide because we sold the REX. And we don't know what energy that is. But if we sell the REX, then we can't say it's clean energy anymore, right? And I think, Chuck, what you're showing is the contracts and not the contracts after the selling of REX, is that correct?
The contracts entitle us to the REX. I could come into a commission meeting at the end of the quarter and hold up a sheaf of paper and say, these are the REX, we own them, therefore, the last quarter, those were green. That's an honest report to the commission, and then the next day, I sell the REX. What we are showing is the potential for green based on the entitlements to REX that we have. We do not have to retire those REX at this point. So we sell them, and we use the proceeds to put back into acquiring other projects, upfront investment in other projects. Now, you're right, we don't get the green label on those. But that is something that is instantaneously transformative. The day after the commission makes a change to any of the policies, I am able to implement that change by changing our transactions in the wholesale market to accommodate the policies that the commission has set forth. So I'm not exactly sure how to address the issue that you raised. As Colleen pointed out, the municipals are the ones that are actually putting up the security for a lot of these projects. Wind projects by Patriot Renewables up in Maine, Gravity Renewables, primarily hydro in Connecticut and Massachusetts. All of those developers come to municipal light plants and have us secure the output. That's 80% of the project. And by us signing up for that on 10-year increments, that gives the wherewithal for those projects to move forward. So I'm not trying to get into a semantics game about what something is on day one, day two, or day three, depending on what kinds of transactions have occurred for defined pieces of it. But the short answer is, and that's the chart of rates or rate impacts that I put up, we can today comply with any of those standards, and our resource portfolio will keep us in compliance into 2032 or 2033, depending on which of the standards that you're looking at. So we have that capability, we can do it. It's a definitional issue going forward, rather than an engineering issue for us.
Okay, great. I think we've reached the end of this discussion period. Thank you very much, Jim, and everyone else, for your input. Excellent discussion. And let's see, I think we're to the end of the meeting, if that's okay. Where the next is, item is really our next RMLD board meeting. I've seen it's listed here as Thursday, August 20th. Does that meet with everyone's acceptance?
Yep. John, I actually did have a question on that last. We've only had an hour and 15-minute meeting here, may I have one minute just to follow up on that?
I got the egg timer set on you, Dave, right now.
You set that egg timer, then throw the egg in my head. If it's possible, and I think, I have to admit, I didn't understand everything Chuck just said. I know everybody else did, but I didn't quite follow every piece of it. Is it, does the question make sense to say, if you looked at RMLD right now under the IOU rules, this is where we would be? Is that a question that makes sense and can be answered? Yeah, that's my first quick yes or no. Is that, can that question be answered?
Yes.
Okay, and it's not in the slides now, or it could be for the subsequent meeting?
It is in the slide package, it's probably about slide six or seven. It's the one with the blue and green colors for the resources, and it has the three project lines.
Okay, thank you. And then my other one was something that I did mean to mention, which is something I think we all can agree on, which is that these peakers, they cost a fortune, they're dirty also. We use them very little now, but could we get to a point where we don't have to use them at all? It's a great credit to the department that we have a 5-megawatt battery. But I know we still use those peakers, they cost way more than what we sell the electricity for, so we lose money, and they're very dirty. So can we maybe, as part of our goal setting, can we get away from them entirely?
Well, first, what I'd like to suggest is we answer whether that's true or not. I mean, whether that question is true or not, Dave. And if it is, then, yeah.
Okay, okay, if I'm wrong, that we don't use them, and then please correct me. If we don't use them, then correct me.
I think that's an ISO.
Go ahead. Rob, go ahead.
No, isn't that an ISO New England question? That's not, that's power supply in the background, that's not power supply in the distribution side. So I think when you're talking about using the peaker, it's based on the load, based on ISO. It's got nothing to do with reading light per se. So you can't determine whether or not that plant goes off.
Okay.
Off or on. There's contracts made up by ISO that determine when that plant kicks on as a backup. So we don't have any say whether that plant turns off or on.
And by the way, everybody, Robert Coulter is an actual engineer on the call and knows the business. But I thought we had a contract with Stony Point that was a separate from the ISO. We have a contract to buy power from the oil peaker at Stony Point.
We are owners of Stony Brook through MWEC. We actually, oh, that's one of the few resources we actually own.
Okay.
Now, the answer to your question, you asked me, per megawatt hour, what does the unit cost each year?
Yeah.
One of the things that drives the cost per megawatt hour up is how little it is dispatched. The less we use it, the more per megawatt hour. But that unit has an offset value to the capacity costs that we pay. So we do get value, we do use it. We pay $2.50 to $3 a KW month for that unit. That's what it costs us, the fixed cost. But we are able to offset $5 a KW month capacity costs that ISO would charge us if we didn't have the unit. So that unit is actually producing a cost savings to us. The unit is dispatching less and less because loads are down in New England. There is more renewable that's pushing on the bottom of the curve and pushing the resources up. So the dirtier and older plants are being pushed out. Mystic 8 and 9 are actually due to retire. They're older than the Stony Brook units. So I'm not trying to teach Power Supply 101 here tonight, but there are other pieces to that that an offline discussion might help better shape.
Let's do that, we're now entering the matrix, let's go offline.
Thanks for tolerating the extra discussion, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome, yes, excellent questions. The next CAD meeting, Representative Mr. Pacino, I believe, for August, and for September, Mr. Hennessy. Okay, good, so I'd like to move that we move into executive session.
Okay, move that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real property and to discuss deployment of security personnel or devices or strategy with respect thereto, and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Thank you. We have a vote, please, Mr. Stenbeck, aye?
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Albert, aye.
Okay.
Coulter, aye.
Okay, we're, the meeting is adjourned, we'll move into executive session. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Thanks, everybody.